...meeting with pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording in progress.
Another roll call.
Wyatt Sewell.
Here.
Reese Vera's absent. Bunce.
Present.
Lawson.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Citizens request an oral presentation. Curtis, you're going to give a presentation on our research.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Well, thank you first of all for the opportunity to work with you guys. I'm going to stand over here so I can kind of also see my slides to make sure I'm not missing anything. This is not going to be a for you to sleep with slides because you guys have a two or three dozen page report there. I'm just going to hit on the high points of that, but also leave time at the end for if you have any questions about that report. So just in summary and for the citizens that are here, the city hired C-band Solutions to conduct a community broadband study, which we did. That included a survey, some meetings, some additional research. And so this is the report from that study and we're wanting to deliver it to you tonight and hit on some of the high points. So if you want to go ahead with the next slide. Oh, yeah?
Sure.
Well, you didn't fall down, at least during the pledge, so here we go. All right. Big finding in this, a lot of this is driven by the survey because that's where we heard directly back from citizens. And really with the exception of STS Broadband, which is a local company, and T-Mobile Home, which is not a local company, but are both wireless. Overall, people were not very happy with their internet providers, especially the two big incumbents that are out there. They received low marks from the citizens who took the survey. There was overall a strong feeling that the community residents would be interested in getting services from a fiber optic provider if one were present. There was support for a municipal fiber option, which is one of the things that we ask people about. But the challenge with that option, unlike some other communities in Iowa that have done this, 28 or so that have done this, is currently because of the size of Hudson, the project doesn't scale as well as a bigger town would like Waterloo or north. And also the current economic environment has raised interest rates to the point where three or four years ago, you could have gotten four to five percent interest on a municipal bond issue on revenue notes. And now that interest rate has gone up. So really in looking at this in today's environment, a full-size municipal bill, whether you owned it and operated it or just owned it and farmed out services to somebody else, is really probably not feasible. You could take a closer look at it and our really high-level numbers could be wrong, but you would have to invest additional funds to hire an engineering firm to do that. The real thing that came out of this study and in fact came out at the very end of this study, the report was already written when we've got an email from NextLink Internet, and they say they are planning to build fiber to the home in Hudson next year. This is a company based out of Texas that received a bunch of federal and state funding to build better broadband in many areas around the country. This is a company that is just going to have to explode in size to meet its requirements for these build-outs. Some of the money they received was from the state of Iowa under their last round of grants that were announced last fall. And that is to build fiber to the home in rural areas west of Hudson and south of Hudson. So if the rural areas are getting fiber, that money came from the state of Iowa to fund that. There was no funding available inside the city of Hudson for any of the grants that were out there because you're considered already to have broadband service. You may disagree whether it's good or not, but under the grant rules, they won't give grant money inside a town like Hudson where you have at least one company that is offering a certain level of service. However, NextLink, in their process of planning to build out that rural area, they took a close look at Hudson and and the email that they sent to us on Friday said that they are planning on building fiber to the home as part of that rural build next year. So that's really good news for you because it will allow you to get fiber from a provider without the city having to move any further if they don't want to and make future investments. So and again, that was last minute notice, right, Friday, when we got that email. So go ahead and get to the next slide. So really where you stand today is we have a different outlook now than when we originally started this. The original proposal that we had for you, based on the feedback that we got from the city, was let's do this broadband study and then if there's additional support for it, move into more research, hiring an engineer that can get it down to your costs into a really more reasonable estimate than the one we have, which is really high-level. And that that is still an option for you as a path. You could conduct that further research, feasibility of a mini broadband network. And we originally proposed that if you did that, we could help you identify an engineering firm that would be willing to do that. That would require additional investment, probably in excess of $20,000 to $30,000 at least, just to get that part started. So that's option one or path one. Path two would be issue our RFI, which is Request for Information, to all providers in the region and say, hey, who wants to come and build fiber to the home in Hudson, Iowa? We've been involved in several projects like that that have really worked well, where we've actually been able to recruit a provider to come into a city that hadn't committed to it before. The challenge is you already have a provider that has said that they're going to do it. So nobody's going to build two, chances are there can be two networks built in Hudson. So that might be a bit of an exercise in futility, quite frankly, especially when you've got somebody already on the board saying they're going to do it. The third path that I think is probably the path, based on the feedback from the working committee that we had on Friday, is the city pivots to working with NextLink to make sure you're coordinating as much as you can with them on their planned project. Now, the thing about broadband is aside from getting access to your rights of way and permits and things like that, there really aren't a lot of rules about it and they can do pretty much what they want to. I think it behooves the city to be engaged with them on that process to make sure that your community, your citizens, your residents' best interests are represented by NextLink coming into town. They are a big company. They don't have local roots. And so I think you're, as policymakers, policy and community leaders, your best shot now is to try to make sure that they're doing the community right and engaging with them. So those are the kind of the paths we came up with and, you know, I think that you've got a couple of different options to consider there. So I think that was the last slide. But just bring up our team that did this. I'm here tonight, Curtis Dean. I should introduce you. Might as well. You all know me. But Todd Kyokoff, who is in India, of all places, for his daughter's engagement party. And then John Willow, who lives in Michigan, and she helped a lot with the writing of the report, tweaking and all that stuff. So that's what we've got. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have as you discuss what you want to do going forward. As I shared with the working group on Friday, Mayor was there, Chrissy was there. If the city wants to engage in that path where you're sitting down with NextLink and trying to get the best deal you can for the community, make sure your interests are looked out for and you needed assistance with that, we would certainly be willing to do that and be happy to give you a proposal to do that. I don't think it would be a big thing. And we've done that with others where we kind of act as a kind of, what I call the city's buyer's agent, right, to represent your best interests because telecom companies, quite frankly, talk a different language. And we can be the people at the table, hopefully if you need us, to make sure that you understand what they're saying.
We talked at the committee meetings, what Curtis is saying, which is consider asking them to put together a proposal for that involvement that we could consider at a future council meeting. You can't act on anything, obviously, tonight.
And you're not in a real hurry. But I think what's really cool about knowing this is coming a year from now is you've got some time to ramp up a process whereby you can get the NextLink folks to the table. And we have contacts within their, like their Director of Network Operations and their person who's their state and local government liaison person. So, you know, I think getting them to the table, you know, they sent me the email and I said, well, just so you know, this is not public information because I work for the city and now everybody in Hudson, Iowa is going to know you're coming. So I think they're kind of on hook.
Well, the thing we talked about too, even though we've got that email that says they're going to come in in 2024, the more we can tighten them in, okay, exactly what do you mean by 2024? What starting? Is it just the plans? Is it putting something in the ground? Is it going to be wireless or is it going to be wired? What we're indicating now is anything else would be above ground, correctly?
Right. Those are the sorts of things you have a discussion with them about. I'm almost positive their plan would be to put fiber cables on poles. They are probably not going to put in an underground system, which, you know, the service in the end is going to be the same. The challenge you have with overhead systems is they are more susceptible to weather damage. And let's hope we've had our dose of Doritos for the rest of our lifetimes.
Don't say that word. I sell insurance.
You've lost a lot of sleep over the past few years. So that's one thing that, you know, the other thing that the city, I think, has a strong interest in working with them is what are the things the city, what are problems the city could solve, whether it's public works, public safety, just inner-city operations that could be facilitated by having fiber connections? And then sit down with them and figure out a way to maybe work with them to get that to happen. And so those are all things, you know, another thing is just their timeline. Like you said, they're saying they're coming in '24. Well, what does that mean? Let's get this on the record so we understand what that means. You're also in your best interest to make sure they don't skip parts of your community just because they don't think they can bring enough money there. That happens in community after community where there's what we call cherry picking. And they'll say, well, we'll take the high-income earners in the community and we'll leave this neighborhood out because it's older homes and maybe people of a lower income. And I think it's certainly in your best interest to try to make sure they build it to everybody, everybody in the community. And also where are you growing? Where is the community going to grow and make sure they have a plan for meeting that growth? And they'll come to you, you know, 10 years from now and say, oh, we don't have enough fiber capability to feed that new residential development on the east side of town. So those are the things you can get out of this hand-holding process with them.
Yeah, so I'm definitely interested in giving a proposal because I just think the wisdom, I mean, we can sit here and listen to him and it's obvious he's got much more wisdom in this arena than we do. So, yeah, I want to see a proposal.
I appreciate the kind words, but I wouldn't call it wisdom. I've been burned a few times, so I've learned from that.
And I'm in technology, for those who don't know me, I'm in technology, but I still recognize you've got more experience in this area of technology, so, yeah.
Well, you know, my main experience is I'm always coming at it from the community angle, whether you have municipal utility, a city. I'm always, you know, got the public hat on, what's in the best interest of the people that use it.
And NextLink, what's like the closest town? I mean, not just the rural areas, but like a community like ours.
Texas.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
That's what I...
Now, they have big plans, right? And they are, I don't know of any other cities or towns in Iowa they are planning to serve. We do have another project that C-band Solutions is working on right now, another town in Iowa where we've issued a request for information or interest and there are people that told me they're working on a response for that. And that would be an in-town, pretty close to your size. But most of what they did was grant money and that grant money almost all went to rural areas. And then I think what they're going to do is they're going to say, okay, we've got rural areas here. What other maybe more urban towns and small cities can we pick up next to it?
Makes sense for them to piggyback onto it.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
I do think it also makes sense for us to continue to hold some sort of a committee type of thing. I've been to a few meetings in Waterloo of their smart city that they got Honeywell grants for. And kind of doing what everybody else does and put together a wish list, you know, crazy things. If our police department could have the capability to do this, maybe nobody's thought of it yet. Or if our fire department or garbage trucks or whatever and be able to say, okay, now how do we fit this in and make this all work? But throw anything that could be crazy out on the table and then see how we can make some of that work. So I think it would be beneficial to the community to continue to have those committee meetings like that, too.
Well, certainly putting a proposal together is not an issue. I'd probably wait till Todd gets back from India and see if he's decided to just move to India and not want to help you anymore. But, yeah, something so you can consider it in June. We do have the benefit of a nice runway here to get this worked on. In the meantime, if, you know, Iowa will just reach out to the NextLink people and inform them of our discussion and say that there will likely be the community, the city, wanting to engage them in the future to make sure everybody's on the same page.
That's good, yeah.
Thanks, Curtis.
All right, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. I've loved working with you and hopefully we get to keep doing, having fun. All right. Thank you.
Jessica, you wanted to inform us something to do with Cedar Valley Solar?
Thank you. I don't know where the state is. It's in there.
That's totally fine.
Whatever you'd like. Perfect. I could help. Look at the slide and thank you, Chrissy.
Yes, you're welcome.
My name is Jessica Malinato. I'm here on behalf of the Nature Conservancy in Iowa. We're a nonprofit, I'm a communication consultant with them that helps plan the Grow Solar program. And but they're a nonprofit here, working on issues like clean energy and solar energy. So I think the next slide might have, this is the basic solar slide. But we actually have this Grow Solar program that we've been able to take all around the state. We've been in multiple counties and so we're really excited. There's some citizens here in the Cedar Valley area that would like to bring it up here. I think Carol Yates was the local resident that helped introduce me to Chrissy and get us on the schedule here today. So really appreciate the time. Just a very quick snapshot of solar in Iowa. I won't go through all these stats so I don't bore you on the time here. But solar employs more than 1,000 people in Iowa, more than 100 businesses throughout the supply chain are supported. It benefits both rural and urban Iowa, which I think is really important to point out. Farmers have actually been leading the way on solar energy implementation for years. They've been using it as a way to control their own energy costs. They're putting on hog barns and grain dryers. So they have really been leading the way on energy innovation. But I think for a city perspective, one of the most exciting parts is that Zillow has found that homes with solar actually sell for about 4.1% more on average than similar homes in that neighborhood. So it's actually a great way to really increase the value of the housing stock in a community, which over time will likely increase the property tax revenue and have another positive impact on the community as well. But it's really a win-win for that. Go to the next slide. One thing I always like to touch on, you know, especially here in the Cedar Valley, there's multiple utilities present. And I wanted to just say that that locally generated energy is also a win-win for the local utility. It helps cut down on transmission and line loss. You know, Doritos were mentioned, you know, when power lines get knocked out, you know, having more generation that's locally sourced is always a great opportunity. And it also helps utilities cut down those peak demand charges when it's really hot in the summer and air conditioning's on blast is actually when solar is performing its best. So it can be a win-win for everyone involved. So what is a Grow Solar program? It's actually a community-driven program that allows people, homeowners, small businesses, farmers, to pool their purchasing power together. If you're a really large business or even a utility, you realize a lot of that economy of scale on your own because you're just buying such a large installation. But if you're the average homeowner and you go out to the market, you know, you might get a few quotes and go with the best option. But the Grow Solar program actually is kind of a defined time period, about three months, with a chosen solar installer. And the more people that go solar, the cheaper it gets. There's some cost breaks for the triggers built in. So that way you actually can realize some savings that would be greater than if you just went out on the market yourself. But at the very core of it, it's just an educational program. You know, the Nature Conservancy and all the partners involved really just want people to be able to understand solar, what it is, how it works, have access to a reputable and qualified installer. There's a lot of bad actors out there. You might have your Facebook feed flooded with some sketchy ads every once in a while. So wanting to make sure that people get connected to real Iowa-based installers that have good information, free books. And at the end of the day, if people decide not to go solar, that's totally okay because that means there's just more educated population. It's really just connecting them with those tools and that educational opportunity. But then it does create that opportunity for those that are interested in taking their solar journey further. They have that reputable installer that can give them that estimate and help them on their journey. But again, it's just really a community-led program to help people learn more about solar. Go to the next one. Wanted to show a case study. I mentioned we've done this in a few other counties. So we've been involved in Warren County, Lynn and Johnson County, Jackson County. Actually, when we did Warren County, I went solar myself. I thought I should probably practice what I preach. So I actually, and it did survive two Doritos. I know we've mentioned that already. But so it's been a great experience for me, but it was also good to kind of live what I've been traveling around the state telling people to do. So here's a little snapshot of Pope County, which was so successful. We're actually going to repeat it again this year. But if you go to the next slide, we have kind of a success by the numbers. Well, first of all, I guess I should say we had 10 cities that came and signed on board to be a part of the Grow Solar Pope County program, which I always think is a great feat in all of itself. You know, if you get 10 communities to sign on to anything, I think that's a win-win. And really, that's just them saying, we're going to support this program and we're going to share educational information. There's absolutely no cost for a city or a partner to participate. It's really just helping to raise awareness of the community. So I always think that's really powerful when you just see the breadth of the communities, whether it was a big one like Des Moines or smaller ones like Greer or Elkhart, really ran the gamut in Pope County for participation. The next slide. Here is the success by the numbers. Again, open just for about a three-month period, we had these educational opportunities called Solar Power Hours, which over 350 people attended. About 432 kilowatts of solar energy was sold or signed up through the program, which I know is hard to visualize what that really means. But it was about 52 properties. Some of those might have been really big installations. Some of those might have been smaller homes. But that's what made up that 432 kilowatts. The really impressive number is that was actually $1.2 million worth of solar sold in just that few-month window. So that was, you know, a very successful program. Obviously, those are people making personal investments in their home, again, increasing that housing stock and the value in those local communities in Pope County. Another big win is just the media exposure. There's always a great media component that just helps showcase how these communities and the county is really forward-thinking and progressive thinking about sustainability goals and helping people realize how they can help control their energy costs, especially in this crazy economic market we've been living in. The next slide. So why Cedar Valley? Again, we've had folks that have come to us, the Yates, being one of the families that have been really excited about trying to bring us to Black Heart County and Cedar Valley because they've seen it in other communities. But we do think it makes sense for Cedar Valley. We've actually seen a lot of innovative leadership here. It's a great economic development opportunity and just that local enthusiasm. I think anytime you see a community that has members that are proactively asking to bring something like this to their community, it's really helpful. And actually, thinking about just Cedar Valley in general, Waterloo actually just passed a resolution last week to officially support their program. So we're still in our early outreach phases, but Waterloo is now the official first city that has signed on and supports. That was really exciting. So here, what does a partnership look like with the city? Again, it's completely free and no cost. Really, you know, it's using that logo again, showing that broad support because the average citizen probably doesn't know who the Nature Conservancy is or the Midwest Renewable Energy Association. So having some sort of line of communication with the city is really important to help just with that visibility. You're welcome to have somebody participate on the advisory team. There's actually an RFP that goes out for that Iowa-based solar installer. Make sure there's a reputable company, you know, if somebody wants to participate in that process to make sure that the city has certain things they'd like to see in that RFP or in that chosen solar installer, they're definitely welcome to participate. A lot of cities like to use their facilities to host one of those Solar Power Hours. We've done that at city halls all around the state. Again, just a great opportunity to bring people down to your city hall or your local amenities to make sure that people know what a great and vibrant community you have. If you have any sort of solar system permitting process, you ever want help kind of reviewing or streamlining, that's something we've helped a lot of communities do too, because some of them have people wanting to hook up solar, but then not necessarily knowing what those steps need to be, even with the fire department or local utility. So we're always happy to help, just provide some brain power to help through any of those processes. Some communities have actually considered solar for their facilities, so we're always happy to help you walk through that process if there's an interest. But again, really it's just education and just sharing the information and success with others. So it's, again, no cost, no obligation, just a great educational opportunity to make sure residents and businesses are aware of. So that's it. I tried to go through that fairly quickly to be conservative of your time, but happy to answer any questions at all.
So what are you looking at from the city? You've got a draft type of agreement?
We do. We do have sample resolutions. I could even send you exactly what Waterloo passed last week. Some cities want to go through that formal process. Others just discuss it and say, we're on board and here's our logo. So it's really whatever works best for your community. But, yeah, we obviously love to have you on board and our timeline, you know, we're kind of talking to communities now. So I think the RFP would probably be going out early summer, once we have kind of a critical mass of partners. And then looking at kind of probably a late summer through the fall program.
Yeah, if you could get that to Chrissy, then we'll figure out what committee they're running through and take a look at it, see how we roll with it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works Committee. Jeff?
Public Works, we met May 10th at 7:00 AM here in the chamber. First item on our agenda was the Public, or the Park and Rec Director position that we've got. Some questions we asked of Jason Netsby and Sean Leonard. They came back, answered our questions. We talked about that position being shared between those two people. Today, what they felt was adequate salary, split between the two of them was $40,000. As we become larger and our gyms grow and we get other things and we add sporting events, they felt that probably with this Park and Rec position, it could become a higher salary, $50,000, $52,000. But today, we're looking on our agenda to approve $40,000, split between Jason and Sean. Now, this was already in our budget and it's in the line item that we have, but that motion carried 4-0. The second line item we looked at was striping. We had a bid from A-Line Striping to do striping within the city, parking lots and that. Also, striping on Shrock and Eldora Road. That total bid package for the two years came to $16,150. That motion was approved 4-0, so we're looking for the approval here tonight. The last line item that we looked at was a flow meter. We have some issues in the rain seasons that our plant receives twice the water that it should. We have a lot of chlorine, de-chlorine that we're handling, so we're wanting to install this flow meter so we know what we can, know what's flowing in and out of the plant better. You know, there was some discussion of longevity of the plant, maybe 10 years, give or take. Yeah, I think this will help us for a little bit, but, you know, back in our mind, we need to replant that seed. So the approval went out. The bid was for $15,000. The motion carried 4-0 and we adjourned at 7:40.
Thanks, Jeff. Any questions for Jeff?
Quick question. Are those two the Park and Rec Directors then, are they technically contract employees? So there's no benefits or anything like that.
Heather? Thanks. Two public hearings we've got tonight. Before we get into the first public hearing, I just want to let everybody in attendance know that the council, in their packets, have had the full minutes from the two planning and zoning meetings. So they've seen all the comments up to date. It's fine to go ahead and state whatever the case is. So I will open the public hearing regarding the approval of the preliminary plan and rezon of the Marianne Lane Development. Any written communications that we've gotten?
The only one that I have is Warren's, but that he's here to speak.
Yeah, Warren. Any oral comments? I'll let Warren go first. You've got a petition, Warren?
Yes, I do. First of all, you'd have to listen to this again. You was at the planning and zoning. I feel sorry for you.
I always pick up different things every time.
I'm way out of my element here, folks, but I'll do the best I can. At the first meeting, when this proposal was presented, plus it was a different name, it was a Mozier. All the people there kind of felt like I did. And I didn't know, and I thought, well, I kind of took it on myself. Why I did that, I don't know, but I did. So I guess I'm representing these people. All right, here I have the majority of Fair Oaks City that signed this. I was amazed. Now I'm stuck. I got to follow through. But do what you want with it. I hope I'm done with it. Anyway, like I said, I lived here 28 years. Anyway, like I said, I lived here twenty-eight years, and, and like I told Justin, I says, when he, yeah, I asked him to come over and talk one day, and we did. And I said, I looked down at that barrier between my house and Blackhawk Creek, and it just gave me a good feeling to have it down there. And I still do, went out this morning, it looks good to me, don't look real good, but I like it down there. So anyway, after Justin, he come over, we had, we had a talk, like I say, he, I didn't think I impressed him much. I did pick up where he was coming from, and I suppose he's presented that arguments to you, he didn't do all this planning by not getting a hold of the city, I'm sure of that. But a couple of the arguments that I figured he gave you was, number one, the dike is worthless, as wasn't designed originally as a dike, and the reason for that being, there's a bridge on the other side of Long Island Street, if we have a major flood, water's going to filter in. Now, I agree with him a hundred percent on that, there's no doubt about that. But knowing people of Hudson, if we was to have a situation here coming up that we was, basically I feel was a flooding situation, that we might need it, Hudson would come together and we would have a sandbag dike, from the dike, through the backyards of people on Long Island Street, clear to Eldora Road, and I, I'm confident that. That's not an ideal situation, but that is a doable situation. That was, and then his other main thing is, everything's going to be out of the flood plain. When I was to one of the zoning meetings, but actually the one that didn't have a quorum, and I think it was just a lawyer, anyway, he kept bringing up different things that had to be done, and I kept hearing minimum requirements, minimum requirements. The state requires their minimum requirements, so when Justin gets done grading, there's no doubt they're going to be at the minimum requirement. My argument is, the dike is going to be quite a bit higher than those requirements, as it sits right now. They're going to be way below that dike. So, in a sense, what he's saying, that dike is over protection, as far as I can see. But there's no, no such thing as over protection when it comes to floodwater. And I think the main thing, pay attention to, just you mentioned the ratio, all these figures that are compiled, they're right up to date, I'm sure, with the state, but they're compiled in the last hundred years. What we gotta be, or should be thinking about, is what's happened in the last five. And there's no, we can't control it, all we can hope is that nothing like that ever happens here. But to give up the protection that we have, to me is ridiculous, whether it's that good a protection. I'm sure everything needs to be improved on down there, that's for a different, that's not, you don't need to be talking about that right now. But I feel that way, and, and most of the people, oh, I, can I have that?
Oh, yeah.
I was going to, well, you were, you're at least read, I suppose you read it, oh yeah. I had that down here, I was going to read.
Go right ahead.
But what, what, what these people were actually, what they were signing, this goes back to the Mosher deal, this is what, when I took to them. "We, the residents of Hudson's Fair Oaks Edition, request the Hudson City Council to reject the Mosher Property Development Concept Two project. The Mosher, the Mosher project would cause the removal of the dike, better known as the bike trail. The dike is our protection from any flooding the Blackhawk Creek may cause." That is what all these people were, were asked, assigned. So I think basically, the way this proposal, the preliminary plot, from the first one to the second, changes nothing. That dike is going to come down. And my argument, and what they're going to, as far as I'm concerned, what they're asking you to do, is ignore the majority of the people, a Fair Oaks Edition, and either put them in harm's way, or your decision is to keep them out of harm's way. That's the way I, I interpret that dike. So that's, I guess, the best presentation I can give. We like it down there, and most of the people like it. Whether it's that adequate, I'm not sure, I don't believe it's that adequate, I think we ought to be improving on, but that's, that's, that's where the future. So that's, I guess, all what I've got to say.
Thanks Warren.
And I don't, I say it again.
Anyone else want to make any comments?
Yes.
Roger?
Roger White, I live at twenty-three zero-three Greenwood Avenue in Cedar Falls. I thank you for the opportunity to be heard, and I wish to speak in opposition to what I view as disruption, or removal, or destruction, whatever word you want to use, of the multi-use trail that lies on top of the former railroad bed in the western portion of town. Apparently, there was some confusion after I spoke of planning and zoning over what trail I was talking about. I'm in no way referring to the trail, or bike lane, whatever you want to call it, along Eldora Road, I'm talking about the one on the old railroad line. The, the embankment is still there from when the railroad went in, and the trail sits on top of the embankment, and the embankment is also, as this gentleman described, a levee. The original description, back when this was first done in the nineties, was a linear park, and the city also apparently calls it a green space, but the neighbors to whom I've spoken to refer to it completely unanimously as "The Trail." I understand that the current version of the plan leaves about a third of it in place, but by removing the majority of it, it still would be destroyed. My connection to this issue is threefold, first, I'm a trail user and supporter of our Cedar Valley Trails, because multipurpose trails are important quality of life resources for recreation, exercise, physical fitness, and physical or mental health. Second, I'm a board member of Cedar Valley Trails Partnership, the nonprofit trail advocacy organization that supports trail development and trail use in the metro area. The mission of the partnership is to quote, "Promote and develop multiple recreational opportunities related to Cedar Valley Trails Network, including fundraising and distribution of grants to nonprofit organizations for the purpose of developing, promoting, or enhancing trails." The partnership board has also adopted the following statement, "The Cedar Valley Trails Partnership supports maintaining and expanding recreational trails and opposes removing any existing trails," end quote. The partnership has raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for major and minor trail project grants in the Cedar Valley, from Clarksville and Shell Rock to LaPorte City and Brandon. In addition, the partnership organizes the annual Earth Day Trail Cleanup and Other Trail Activities. My third connection is that I'm Chair of Blackhawk County Resource Enhancement and Protection, or REAP, Committee. This committee drafts and updates the Blackhawk County REAP Plan and annually considers all grant applications for REAP funds from jurisdictions within the county. Development of the trail, or the green space, or the linear park, whichever you want to call it, in question, was funded partially with a seventy-four thousand, six hundred dollar REAP grant in the late nineteen nineties, that was entitled Sergeant Road Trail Extension, or at times Sergeant Road Trail Extension, comma, Recreational Trail Project. REAP grants are consistently very competitive, and typically the grant requests far exceed the available funds, these are state funds. Any city or town is very fortunate to receive a REAP grant as a result of the limited funds and extreme statewide competition. Because of this, it is indeed regrettable if a city destroys or disrupts a REAP project. Projects funded with REAP grants are intended to be preserved for the long-term use and enjoyment by the public. For example, the grant recipient is required to commit to a restricted use/preservation agreement in order to receive the grant funds. The city of Hudson accepted and signed this agreement November eighth, nineteen ninety-six, and the agreement is recorded at the Blackhawk County Recorder's Office. That agreement adopts several provisions from the Iowa Administrative Code, which I'm not going to read to you now because of time constraints, but they're in the packet that I believe has been shared with you. The next section is, I had several questions that I posed at planning and zoning, and of course, none of them were answered that night because of the nature of the public hearing, but so far, I have not heard any response to this list of about eight or ten questions. Those are also in your packet, I'm not going to read those again to you, but I think those, it's necessary that those questions be answered and publicly disclosed before this moves forward. Before a decision to remove or disrupt the trail, I urge you to go back to nineteen ninety-six documents and read the letters of support that were provided to support that nineteen ninety-six grant application. These enthusiastic letters included the Lions, the Chamber, scout leaders, among others. People excited about this going in, I don't know that they'd be excited about it going out. In conclusion, speaking for the Cedar Valley Trails Partnership, I oppose the proposed destruction of this trail for several reasons. Loss of trail is a resource for the community, potential flood impact on the neighborhood if the trail embankment is removed, the REAP grant agreement, where the city has previously committed to preserve this trail, neighbors indicated their opposition by petition, and lastly, the Cedar Valley Trails Partnership, the board that I serve on, opposes removing any existing trails. I urge that the proposal to remove or disrupt this trail be rejected. If the developer and the city still want to proceed with that land out there by the creek, I urge the entire project be moved north of the trail, so it's unaffected, and then you can go ahead and do what, what the city wants to do. Thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Thank you Roger.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak?
Chris, would you like a hug?
Tom Peterson.
That's yours.
My son Justin was wanting to develop this, but I grew up on, on Oak Street my whole life, my parents have lived there for fifty-five years or longer, sixty-five years as I can remember, anyway. The elevation above sea level of Walnut, Oak, and Elm is nine hundred feet above sea level. If it ever floods that street, the city hall, lower level, will be underwater, my ops will have ten feet of water in it. So I don't understand the water issue. You can't disregard sea level. Water seeps on level, it's going to cross every cornfield, bean field, before it gets here, before it goes up your street, before it floods city hall, the COA, all Vane Street, clear up to the three hundred block, when it raises up to about nine hundred and ten feet above sea level. So I'm just talking facts, not fiction. The railroad track was built for the elevation to keep the train not climbing, as always supposed to be, could be in our area, when they built that. So that's all, I wanted to just get the water portion of it, and talk fact, not fiction. I talked to Warren about it before the meeting, so he knows what I was going to say.
Next time.
Jim Dale, one twenty-four Walnut. If we want to talk facts, I know that probably a majority of you remember back in, in oh-eight, when the floodwaters came, and it is not uncommon for the area north, where the waters row in that whole area becomes flooded. That, that's a well-known fact. But we, we cannot count on what may or may not happen, as, as Roger indicated, not Roger, Warren, as Warren indicated, removing any protection at all is, in my mind, not good, even if it is only minimal protection. I also want to add that we, the residents are not opposed to the construction that he is proposing. What we are opposed to is the removal of the railroad dike, whatever you want to call it, from the mere fact that we are concerned that water may come through. And if, if you ask all of the residents and sign that, I believe that you will get the majority, if not all, of the people will feel the same way. So, and, and also, I, I know that you have read what Roger talked about, and one thing that was brought out at the meeting of the, the last meeting that I was at with the Planning and Zoning Commission, was that there was possibly a twenty-year limit on that information, where the city would not have to pay back that grant. One question I would have is, has that been investigated, and do we know if that's true or not? I would hate for the city to proceed and then have to pay back that seventy-six thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thanks.
Troy Dale, one twenty-four Walnut Street. One thing that I would like the city council to consider, and I would like, we haven't gotten any answers as far as how, how far down he's going to grade the bike trail when he does that, and I would like to, first of all, if he does that, not only do we have the flooding issue, and water already runs down our street from Eldora Road, runs all the way down, Jim explained that last time, it's three to four feet wide when it's very flooded. When there's a lot of water, it seeks its lowest level. I don't know about city hall, down here, we're talking about Fair Oaks Edition, not city hall, not downtown Hudson. The thing of it is, is it seeks the lowest point, it seeks our path down, because we live at the end Walnut Street, we are the last property that beds up against that bike trail, it does go down that creek, and it is three to four feet wide, it destroys all the grass, it destroys everything. Number two, if he grades this bike trail down, number one, he's going to, I understand, I would think he's going to bring in fill dirt, and if you build on fill dirt, your foundations are going to crack, you can't build basements, whatever, however, he's going to do it. But the thing of it is, is anybody on this council, or how will the city check the grade? Because it's going to settle, it's my understanding that if you bring in fill dirt, you have to bring in sand, you have to bring in rock, you have to bring in, in, in the fill dirt, and you have to let it settle, and it takes a long time to do that, to make sure that that's stable, because fill dirt will settle, and that's coming from contractors that we know. But I want to know, because if he grades that down, and he says it's only X amount of feet, who's going to make sure that it is actually that, and once all that ground settles, that it is at the grade level he says? He might say he's going to take it down two to three feet, but once all that, that gets settled and everything, is it going to be to two, three bound, or is it going to go lower than that? There are just some technical things that go with this, that we don't have answers for, I don't know if the city council has even gotten answers. When, when does the public get to have the details of this proposal? It's my understanding that when a contractor takes something to a city, they have their detail. And I don't know if you guys do or not, because we haven't had those answers. So as Warren said, the neighbors, we are all concerned, we like the dead-end streets, I would think that if he builds houses on the other side, people will be more apt to build, would buy over there, because they have the bike trails, their kids will be safe, it's a dead-end streets. I understand you have to through, have a through fear, but if you move that road over, there shouldn't be a problem, you're going to build there, it should be a problem if you move the road either. So that's just our feeling.
Thank you. Anything else?
Justin Peterson, developer. So, there, contrary to popular relief, it's not the wild west down there, we're going to have engineering done, everything's going to be certified. The storm sewer that will run along at the end of these streets, there'll be intakes that are actually on the preliminary plat, that take the water from the end of these streets underneath the road, and disperse of them in a detention area. The detention area, we're working with the Iowa BNR, as far as an OXPO, to help retain water to mitigate some of this flood damage that is so prone to that area. In doing so, we will improve, I would assume, everybody's well-being. We took on this project, not knowing what kind of pushback we would receive, I think everybody can agree it's looking a lot better down there, we've actually sectioned off the house, and a new family's going to be moving to Hudson because of that. We're going to increase the tax base with this development, with residential and commercial lots, and we would be open to a bike trail if need be, if we do want to come into a partnership with the city. But the... But some of the elevations and whatnot would be developed as far as the final plat. And again, that would come before you guys be certified. And obviously, me being in town, I'm willing to work with everybody involved and try to keep as much happiness as we can.
Thanks, Justin. Any other comments? Oppose the public hearing? Oppose second public hearing for consideration of business received, proposal contract documents, including plans, specifications, form of contract, physicality, and estimated cost for the Wood Street Reconstruction Project. Any written comments, Chrissy?
No.
Any more comments?
No.
Oppose the public hearing? General Government, Hudson City Council maintains the right to weigh the first and second readings of the ordinance as presented and may pass the third and final reading of the same ordinance during the same council meeting. Before we talk about item A, item A is discussion action to approve Resolution 3070, resolution for approval of the preliminary plat for Marion Land Development. Just one thing I want to emphasize again to everyone. This is preliminary plat. It is not anyway final. The big thing from a developer's perspective, having been a developer myself on the southwest corner of town, developer needs to have at least, conceptually, that it's going to be okay provided they address concerns. And the city be involved with addressing those concerns, working with the developer, working with the citizens to try to get something as good as possible for everyone. The reason you don't have answers on a lot of this stuff you're asking for, such as the elevations, such as the flood problem, is the developer has to go to a lot of expense to have engineering done to absolutely be able to show what is the height of particular land? What is the height up there on the wall? I do just a stupid drawing because I have to see a picture in my head at times. And from the right-hand side, that is going down one of your three streets, and you currently hit the bike trail, the railroad bed, the greenscape, whatever you want to call it. And that's what it would look like today. Well, the original concept that was the first discussion at Planning and Zoning was the developer, Justin, was looking at just going down your streets and going right on down to a street either on, in the spot of your trail, a railroad bed, or to the side of it. He had not looked at, well, do I really have to cut that down? Where can I put this street? Should I move it 90 feet to the north, as he had mentioned, probably possibly doing? And I met with Justin, because I'm on behalf of the city, I've got to try to come up with something that's going to work for everybody. So the concept I drew was what if that dotted line is how the street goes, which is down your street, Walnut, whatever, Oak, but then has to go up, and maybe it's a foot or two that comes off of that railroad bed, but not the whole thing. So it has to go up. There is an amount of protection, and then it goes down to the street. I can make a drawing, but it doesn't mean anything to you or anybody else unless we can have engineers' drawings that says, okay, here's what this means. Justin had his preliminary plat. There are numbers on it. I even struggle because I'm not an engineer. I'm an accountant. I got to have stuff that adds up. So the goal of this whole thing is, and what we're presenting, I'm presenting to the council for their consideration will be, do you want to approve the preliminary plat? Not this, this is not the final. This is preliminary. So at least Justin can say, okay, if I'm going to put a whole bunch of dollars into this thing to get engineering, to see if it's going to fly, I got to at least know that if I deal reasonably with issues that have come up, that we can come to something that works in a final plat. Even in a final plat scenario, there's detail that will have such things as, okay, are we going to have to, are you going to have to have trees down the side so that there's a barrier between residential, commercial? All that stuff comes in in final plating. And the final plating is after a whole bunch of work to an engineer's, developer, meeting with the city. We go through your comments. We try to come up with answers as best we can. Then it gets to final plat that has to go to Planning and Zoning, that has a public hearing, that you get to see the whole thing in detail. And then, even after that, it's got to go back to City Council, public hearing, review, and three readings. I think it's three readings, right? Even on that one? No, single. But to have to go through that process. All I'm trying, I've lived in Hudson since I married my wife here in 1971. And every time I move out of town, I come back to Hudson. I did the development in the southwest of town, and we had issues of concern that we're going to flood everybody down those streets. Well, my wife had to walk around and say, hey, I'm Wyatt. I grew up in this town. We're not going to do anything. We have no intent of doing something that's going to screw up the neighborhood or anybody else. That's the goal here. Are we going to be able to be, is he going to be able to satisfy everybody? Absolutely? No, probably not. But we're going to do our darndest to come as close as possible if council approves going through with preliminary plat. So with that editorial comments, do I have a motion to approve the preliminary plat?
So moved.
Second.
Now, now discussion.
I'll say right off the bat, and I've had this conversation with you, I know I've had this conversation with you, that I am not for making anyone's houses or putting anyone in danger of making their house worse than it currently is by any means and doing everything at all costs to avoid that. But I am for development in the community, and we need to continue to grow, otherwise, you know, obviously, our schools, our library, our city, our everything needs to continue to grow. And on that note, I am also, Roger knows this, 100% behind trails, behind bicycles, behind everything. However, this portion of this trail that we're talking about is a portion of the trail, but I have the confidence in knowing that I think the vision and in all the details are not worked out, but with the area that is currently a flood, no, not flood plain. Am I saying that right?
It's a flood risk area.
Flood risk area down there will have some future potential development for better and more community activity areas over there that are not only going to replace or supplement what we've currently got, but also help with the flooding issues that we're talking about too. Because I know as a developer in the community, as a business owner, as whatever, you're not here to hurt anybody else either. And again, I want to make sure that we take all of those risks into effect when we're looking at future development. My family owns property on Dale Drive. They're concerned about if we continue to block off where that water comes from. That needs to be addressed, and it will be addressed. And that's the details that I think I'm confident in looking at and agreeing with the initial plat here tonight.
And I would add that I think I'm really in the same place that you are, Kate. And I also am a trail user and, you know, would hate to see trails completely done away with. But I would hope that we would keep in mind that we would, you know, do something to replace what's taken away there and to continue to provide that type of opportunity in the community. But I feel that it's important to allow us to move to that next step to, you know, see what can be done and to continue to see if we can't find a solution that works for everybody.
And I heard you guys' questions. I really did. And I want to answer them, but we can't answer them until we go forward. You know, and that's going to be the biggest thing. I think getting this through, get the plan, get the plots put together, see what they're doing. I think that's going to answer your concerns. As George emphasized, it comes back across his board again. So I think right now, we need to let Justin move forward and get the plans put together so he can either make you guys feel comfortable, adequate, you know, I don't look for him to want to ruin that end of town because he's got lots to sell down there, too. But, you know, as Kate said, you know, it's a new development. It grows our community. We want to grow it in the right way.
And as a longtime resident of Hudson, we have struggled for years, and having been here on the council for about 10 years, we have struggled for a long time what to do with that property. Having been involved on state level in different organizations, people come into town and they go, you know, you have a great town here, but what are you going to do with that property someday? And I think we have the opportunity to do something. And so we want to see what we can do to move forward with that. At the same time, what Jeff said, I hear your concerns, you know, because if water ever gets up to where I live, we're in trouble.
For the discussion? Roll call.
All right, Lawson?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
All right, motion carried 4-0.
Thank you all. We'll keep you up to date. We'll be working with Justin. He's got all the notes. We've got all the notes. And we'll hope to have an answer on every one of them. Might not be the answer you want to hear, but we're going to try to come up with the best possible. Yep, go ahead.
If I'm permitted, I do have one other question.
I'm allowed to allow you to talk.
Okay.
I'm the one that controls this thing right now.
Okay, thank you. At the last meeting of the Planning and Zoning, we were not allowed to get answers. Will we be able to get answers and ask questions at the final plat?
Absolutely. Planning and zoning is a little bit trickier than what it is here. This is pretty much under my control. I may have a city attorney, if she's sitting over there, slap my wrist a few times, but I take my chances. And my goal is to have it 100% open and be able to ask questions, be able to get answers. I'd love to have been able to come in and giving you some answers because I know some of the stuff that Justin is thinking about that will deal with some of your questions, but that's where some of this entanglement comes in. But my goal is it's wide open, and we'll see how much latitude we can have even at the Planning and Zoning. But as we come up with these plans, as Justin's able to get his engineering done and get clearer stuff that says, okay, here's really what it is, and if we have some three-dimensionals to where you know where those numbers are going to be, it will be that. We'll have more information as far as relative to the concerns of the railroad bed, bike trail, whatever we all want to call it, and how that whole thing comes in from the history. So our goal is to, my goal is to have that, Chrissy's is the same.
Okay. It was just, it was very disconcerting to find out at the meeting that we would not get answers. And you could feel the mood of the people fall.
And that's the biggest challenge about preliminary plats versus the final plats. And the final plats is, we'll have, hopefully, we'll have 95% of the answers before that final plat ever goes to to the Planning and Zoning. And then obviously, if they have items that need to be resolved and questions comes back, that's the one more step before it comes back here to the council as well. And the who's ourselves is, as we come up with information that will address any of your items, one, two, three, four at a time, we'll figure out a way to try to get that all out to you so you don't have to come in here in advance or anything. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thanks all for being here.
You're free to go. We've got a lot more going on here yet too tonight.
Whatever you want to do. See ya. Ever? You don't want to just come sit? We're nice people.
Nothing against you, but for you too.
So we really appreciate you.
Okay, where am I, B?
Yes.
Okay. Item B, discussion action to approve the first reading of ordinance 866, an ordinance amending section 166-02, zoning ordinance of City of Hudson Iowa is amended by removing certain real estate from the A1 suburban agricultural district to R1 single-family residential and C1 central commercial district. This is simply the rezoning of the preliminary plat.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Bunz? Aye.
All right, motion carried 4-0.
Item C, discussion action to approve Resolution 3071, resolution for approval to award the bid and project for the Wood Street Reconstruction Project for the City of Hudson, Iowa, in the amount of $378,992.45, which is under the engineer's estimate that was for $466,000. Note that $378, a portion of that will come back from the school as their portion of it. And it'd be awarded to Hudson Hardware Plumbing and Heating. Does that have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
All right, Wyatt?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
All right, motion carried 4-0.
Item D, discussion action to approve Resolution 3072, resolution for approval of hiring, setting wages, and approving temporary part-time summer recreation helpers for the City of Hudson, Iowa.
This is the part-time, the?
This is for kids adventure.
Oh, oh, okay.
That are helpers. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
All right, Sewell?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
All right, motion carried 4-0.
Item E, discussion action to approve Resolution 3073, resolution to approve the request of the Community Church of Hudson for the use of the golf course for a golf tournament on June 20th.
25th.
25th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
All right, 4-0.
Just, sorry, I should have asked real quick. There's no fee involved with that crap, since it's a free golf course anyway, but just reserving it for you. Yep, thank you.
Item F, discussion action to approve Resolution 3074, resolution for approval of line-stripping bids for the 2023 and 2024 seasons.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Lawson?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
All right, motion carried 4-0.
Item G, discussion action to approve Resolution 3075, resolution to approve the purchase of a flow meter for the City of Hudson. And Jeff had referenced that, not only does it calculate what chlorine is needed, it also calculates what offsets. So, and it does it automatically instead of just simply giving a reading to the operator. Right?
Right.
Does it cut out any other, like, it doesn't cut out any testing or anything else that we have to do?
Doesn't cut the testing out, but at least we got a starting block.
Reduces our risk of being out of tolerance, is that what you call it?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Bunz?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
All right, motion carried 4-0.
Item H, discussion action to approve Resolution 3076, a resolution for approval to offer employment and set wage for recreation directors for the City of Hudson, and this is also what Jeff referenced.
So.
Discussion?
Is this?
Go ahead.
I used to ask if this was a temporary.
It's two existing teachers, right?
One is, Sean Leonard is the teacher.
Teacher.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they're basically splitting the responsibility at $20,000 each for a one-year term. They're going to keep track, roughly keep track of the hours that are spent on it so that we see, okay, how does that match up? So they're contractors, so that we don't have a wage-hour scenario. But it's to give us a one-year test period of what do we really need in the future? They're talking that once the new gymnasiums get built, they might have opportunities for indoor leagues and stuff. So it would be a lot of additional work that could be handled by this position. But as long as they're keeping track of this, then we'll see how it goes. It's in budget. Now, if it becomes a full-time person at a $52,000 salary plus benefits, different ballgame. That's why we test this for a year at this limited involvement. Get all that? Chrissy, you've been involved with this heavily, too.
And it's been, it was hard to determine what the hours were going to be. You know, there's a lot of programs that they do and a lot of programs that they want to put into this, but from them sitting out there telling us about it, it's like, hours, what are you talking about? We had no idea.
And one of them had to get approval by his full-time employer that he could do this, so there was a lot of stuff involved with this one.
Who will they report to?
We never talked about that.
No, but typically, how it flows in, they'll flow into Jake, who then flows into me.
And be reporting me to the Park and Rep Commission.
I was just going to say, will they report directly to the Park and Rep?
And Chrissy's on Park and Rep.
Yeah.
Okay.
And did it not have to come to personnel because it's a contract situation? Okay, because normally, normally they do.
If it becomes an employee, then it'll be a different ballgame.
Yeah, I think it sounds like a good approach.
A year from now, it'll be on your plate.
I do think, I mean, I think we have grown to the point, and there's so many kids in this community, and it's not just the kids either, that, you know, I hope they continue to think of things outside the box. You know, the golf course has been used a ton this year. There are golf leagues that could be set up as their tennis, pickleball, whatever.
That's exactly what they're talking about.
And I think it's.
They have a lot of good ideas.
It's doing adult, more adult-type programs instead of just kids.
Just everything included. And I think it's fantastic. And I think it's fantastic and wonderful, and I think we're leading the way with some of the other little communities that don't do this. And we've talked about in the past that there was a potential, and maybe they find out there is a potential for some duplication and cost sharing with, you know, Trayer, or, you know, whatever the case may be, but we're leading the path with that, and then we can kinda figure out from there. So I think it's a great idea.
Did I have a motion in a second?
You did.
Further discussion, roll call.
All right, Lawson.
Aye.
Sewell.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Bunz.
Aye.
All right, motion carried 4-0.
There's a few informational items in there, regular items, reminder items, regular scheduled meetings held with council changes except for the library board, public safety's been canceled, is that correct?
Correct.
It will be, if it hasn't yet.
Yeah, I'll send something out.
Public Works meeting, June 14th, 7:00 a.m., Mayor's Task Force, may or may not occur in June, but right now it's scheduled for 5:00 p.m. June 20th, Personnel Admin, June 26th at 4:45 p.m., as council meeting at June 12th at 6:00 p.m., and then June 26th at 6:00 p.m. Do we hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
How'd that work?
That worked really well. I just wanted to say, as a neighbor to the new park equipment that is open, we have heard during the weekend, I told this to Chrissy and George, little kids going, I don't wanna go home, I love this place. And they're dragging them, they're crying, and so, so.
So it's officially open for use, right? Chrissy, you're trying to organize some type of a ribbon cutting or something?
Yep, I'm trying, I'm hoping to do that this week before the kids leave for the summer.
Could we also please ask the public works team if they can open the splash pad as soon as possible, because everybody keeps asking me about it, and telling me, and saying, it's gonna be really hot this week, can we have the splash pad open? My kids live on the splash pad.
I thought he was gonna open it, but he's at home with a sick baby.